Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll open with the salute to the flag, please.
Recording in progress.
We have roll call, please, Tripp.
Ibra Scovdall.
Here.
Noah Levy.
Here.
Thomas Mulder. Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
Sarah West.
Here.
Jerome Kiarazi.
Here.
And Lorna McFarland.
Thank you. Director Ford, do we have any agenda modifications this evening?
There are no modifications to this one item agenda.
Okay.
You did get a letter tonight dated May 1st, 2025. It's on, should it be on the dials?
Yes, we have that, thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll take public comment on non-agenda items. If anybody would like to address the commission on matters under our jurisdiction that are not on this evening's agenda, please approach the podium or raise your hand online by pressing, what is it, star nine? If you'd like to speak. And I don't see anybody in the room that's going to approach the podium. And I don't see any hands raised online. So we will close public comment on non-agenda items. And could we have the record note that Commissioner Mulder has joined the meeting? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. However, there are no matters on the consent agenda this items, this evening. So we'll move to old business, which we continued over from our last meeting, to adopt a vehicle miles traveled policy by resolution for the SEQA threshold and the screening criteria in that policy. So Director Ford, I'll turn it over to you and staff to make a presentation, please.
Yeah. That's not right. Okay, my apologies. All right, good evening, commissioners. My name is Megan Acevedo, and I will be presenting the Vehicle Miles Travel Threshold Policy. SB 743 was signed into law in 2013 and fundamentally changed how local governments assess transportation impacts under SEQA by switching the primary metric from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. Starting in July of 2020, local governments were required to assess projects' transportation impacts using the VMT metric, either by adopting thresholds of significance or reviewing projects on a case-by-case basis. The department has been assessing projects' transportation impacts with the VMT metric on a case-by-case basis, and we are proposing to set guidelines through the VMT threshold policy to provide consistency in project review. Level of service and vehicle miles traveled are fundamentally different when assessing transportation impacts. While level of service focused on project impacts to traffic congestion and roadways and intersections by using scores A through F to determine the level of impact, VMT focuses on the amount of travel that a project would generate compared to the average for the county. The VMT metric is used by determining what a typical trip length would be for a project compared to the established average trip length for the county. In order to comply with SEQA and enhance the use of the VMT metric for project review, we have developed the draft VMT threshold policy being presented tonight. Development of the policy was done using the OPR Technical Advisory on Evaluating Transportation Impacts in SEQA, incorporating recommendations from Farr and Pierce Traffic Consultants and the VMT Study Report, and through consultation with other local jurisdictions. The VMT policy establishes a baseline for existing VMT, sets quantitative thresholds to determine a project's level of impact under SEQA, outlines appropriate screening criteria for projects to be screened out of needing a detailed VMT analysis and considered to have a less-than-significant impact, and sets guidelines for detailed project VMT analysis when projects cannot be screened out. The overall goal of the policy is to encourage development in appropriate areas that would result in lower VMT and discourage development in locations that would result in a higher VMT. Analyzing a project under SEQA determines if a project would have a less-than-significant impact, would have a less-than-significant impact with mitigation, or would have an impact that is significant and unavoidable. Adopting specific screening criteria with the policy would allow for efficiency when assessing transportation impacts by identifying early on if a project is considered to have a less-than-significant impact or if further detailed analysis is needed to determine the project's level of impact. Here is a list of recommended screening criteria, which have been developed using the recommendations of the OPR Technical Advisory. The following criteria would identify projects considered to have a less-than-significant transportation impact and would not be required to do a detailed VMT analysis. Projects that would be screened out include small projects that generate less than 110 trips per day, residential and employment projects located within low VMT-mapped areas, mixed-use projects located within all applicable low VMT-mapped areas, projects within a half mile of a major transit stop identified in the regional transportation plan, 100% affordable housing projects within urban areas, local serving retail projects that are under 50,000 square feet, and redevelopment projects that would not increase VMT from existing uses. It should be noted that there are currently no major transit stops in unincorporated Humboldt County, but there are plans to increase the list of major transit stops identified in the regional transportation plan, such as one being proposed on Central Avenue with the McKinleyville Town Center. In order to assess projects against the VMT metric, specific methodology needs to first be identified. The following VMT metrics are established in the proposed policy and were developed using the recommended VMT per capita methodology from the OPR Technical Advisory. The two metrics established are VMT per resident and VMT per employee. The VMT per resident data would be used to assess residential projects, and the VMT per employee data would be used to assess projects that have employees, including retail, commercial, and industrial projects. Existing baseline VMT data for the county was established in the VMT study from Farr and Pierce, utilizing 2022 Streetlight data to estimate the average trip length per resident and average trip length per employee. The study found that for unincorporated Humboldt County, the average VMT per resident was 22.1 miles per day, and the average VMT per employee was 14.7 miles per day. The Streetlight data also identified the countywide averages, including data for the incorporated cities. These averages were found to be 20.1 miles per resident per day and 13.2 miles per employee per day. The county has the option to use the unincorporated county averages or the countywide averages, including the cities, to set a baseline and threshold. The VMT policy currently utilizes the unincorporated county average because this is more reflective of the county's jurisdictional area. The VMT policy sets thresholds of significance for new development projects, which is in line with the recommendations of the OPR Technical Advisory. As there are two baselines established for existing VMT, there are two thresholds to follow. The thresholds being recommended are 15% below the existing baseline for residential projects and 15% below the existing baseline for employment projects. Here is a map of the areas using block groups that were found to already have an average VMT per resident that is below the threshold. These areas can be included as low VMT screening areas for residential projects in the policy. As you can see, there are several block groups found to be below the threshold that are in very rural areas. The data in the map is valid and is representative of people's travel behaviors in rural areas as they tend to make less trips to goods and services. However, as the policy is intended to reduce overall VMT in the county, this map is not being recommended as low VMT screening areas for residential projects. Here is a map of the residential low VMT areas that are being recommended tonight, which remove the outlying rural block groups from the available map screening criteria. It should be noted that going with the countywide average for existing residential baseline VMT, which includes the cities, would further reduce the available screening areas from this map. Here is a map of the areas using block groups that were found to have an average VMT per employee that is below the threshold. These areas can be included as low VMT screening areas for employment projects in the policy. And also, as you can see here, this map also identifies several block groups that were found to be below the threshold that are in very rural areas. And again, as the policy is intended to reduce overall VMT in the county, this map is not being recommended as low VMT screening areas for employment projects. Here is a map of the employment low VMT areas that are being recommended tonight, which remove the outlying rural block groups from the available map screening criteria. And it should also be noted that going with the countywide average for existing employee baseline VMT, which includes the cities, would further reduce the available screening areas from this map. To recap some of the previous information presented, the VMT policy would provide appropriate screening criteria for projects that would automatically be considered to have a less-than-significant transportation impact and determine that no further VMT analysis is required. Projects that cannot be screened out would require further detailed VMT analysis to determine their level of impact, and projects found to be above the threshold through a detailed analysis would need to apply mitigation strategies to the extent feasible. Mitigation strategies applied may reduce project impacts to a level that would be considered less-than-significant with mitigation. Here is a flow chart that is provided in the draft policy guidelines, which shows the step-by-step process for VMT impact assessment under SEQA. I'm sorry that it's very small, you probably can't see it very well. Projects that conduct a VMT analysis are, and are found to be above the established threshold and apply mitigation strategies can potentially reduce their impacts to a level of less-than-significant, or if they are still found to be above the threshold with mitigation strategies applied, they would be found to have a significant and unavoidable impact with mitigation. Here is a list of the recommended project scale mitigation strategies in the policy guidelines. Use of cleaner fuel vehicles has been striked through because this does not actually reduce VMT, and parking management and end-of-trip facilities are underlined because we are recommending to add these to the guidelines. Here is a list of community scale strategies that are being recommended and could be applied to long-range plans and projects. And here is a table showing the potential VMT reductions that could be achieved by each mitigation strategy, as identified in the California Air Pollution Control Officers' Association's Handbook for Calculating Reductions. These strategies can be combined in a project to achieve a less-than-significant impact with mitigation. Lastly, a VMT impact fee program is identified as a future strategy for mitigation. This program is identified as Policy CP 12 in the circulation element of the general plan and will need to be implemented at a later time. We have received comments on the policy, and after review and consideration of these comments, the following changes to the guidelines are being recommended. We're recommending to add the language that a reassessment will be done in 2030 to determine if there is a need to update the baseline VMT for the county. Add language to specify that employment projects would include projects that have employees, including industrial and commercial projects. Add language to include utilizing the Trip Generation Guide from the Institute of Traffic Engineers in detailed project VMT analysis. Removing rural block groups from low VMT screening maps. Update major transit station to major transit stop. Adding, or as recommended for the CAPCOA handbook calculations, and remove use cleaner fuel vehicles from the mitigation strategies. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
A couple of questions. First off, process through the chair. We were provided last meeting, two public comments. This meeting, one written public comment, but it seems like we were not provided another. We got it provided electronically, but I'm just fair of process that if we're getting only written public comments one way, I feel that the process may, I just, I don't know. I feel a certain way that the equality of the written public comments should all be here in front of us, so that way we can look at them.
Yes.
We don't disagree, but it's just that that comment was just received today. So that's why it was just a copy was made and provided to you.
Okay, thank you. So, and another question, just to clarify, this, the study was done in 2020? Is that correct or incorrect, the VMT study?
The VMT study actually started in 2023.
2023, okay.
Yes.
And then I heard, if I heard in the staff report, the choice can be made to choose the unincorporated VMT or the countywide VMT, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I have a few more questions, but I'll hold those till after public comment. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Clarification, when you say 20.1 miles or whatever you said per resident or per employee, is that a round trip?
Trips are one-way.
It's one-way?
Yes.
Any other questions, staff from commissioners at this time, or we'll take public comment? Okay, we'll open public comment. If you're in the room, please, you can approach the podium. You have three minutes for public comment. If you're online, please indicate by raising your hand. I think that's star nine, is that correct? If you're online to raise your hand, if you'd like to make a comment, and we'll take your comments after those here in the room. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Simmons, and I'm an attorney at the Environmental Protection Information Center, better known as EPIC. EPIC supports the county's plan to adopt VMT thresholds and supports a minus 15% threshold for VMT for residential land use projects. However, in order for the calculation of minus 15% to be defensible, we need an appropriate baseline. Using a countywide average does not produce an appropriate baseline. And the reason is that different parts of the county have vastly different average vehicle miles traveled. This is, including the unincorporated county. You know, someone who lives in Myrtle Town is going to have a very different way of getting around than someone who lives in Shelter Cove. And so having a countywide average doesn't really make sense. The solution to this is to not use a countywide average and instead to use more localized tools to calculate VMT baselines for particular areas of the county. Such tools exist and are readily available, such as the VMT Plus tool, produced by the same firm that the county used that I highlighted in my letter. That tool is free. It's based on 2019 data, but, you know, my feeling is that development patterns in Humboldt County haven't changed that significantly from 2019 to 23. And so using a free tool from 2019 that's more granular is better than using a countywide average from 2023. That loses all those specific differences between different parts of the county. This policy has the potential to promote really smart development and to reduce our climate pollution and traffic congestion. It's also going to protect, you know, the rural character of Humboldt that we all care about so deeply. But if for any reason you choose not to urge staff to use a more localized VMT baseline, we do urge you to adopt recommendation number two from the staff report that would include the incorporated parts of the county as well, which is, it's still an average, it's averaging all these different places, but at least it gets you sort of closer to a more realistic average. Thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing what you decide.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Praj White, and I'm here just wanting to share thoughts about this program as I deal with permits and land use in SEQA on a regular basis. Through the chair and to the commission and staff, I always appreciate your service. I want to state that I did make, me and Angie wrote some written comments for the last meeting, as did Jerome and others, and I wanted to applaud staff and the detailed analysis and the breakdown on that. I was very happy with their explanations and program. Overall, I support the program as it is written and recommended. I do agree with the county on the unincorporated averages. I wanted to put out there that the 110 trips per day screening is maybe like 25 residential units, so it's a pretty good screening size. So what we're talking about is really a policy that requires EIRs and mitigations and more complicated analysis to get a project through when maybe it's over 25 units. So that's kind of when we're talking housing, it's just kind of a scale of things. Overall, I really wanted to emphasize that there is a screening policy about housing projects and affordable housing projects only. And I really think that housing projects are important across the board and that maybe as was responded to our comment, it's a policy decision. So you could choose to take only affordable housing, or you could do all housing projects with a percentage of affordable housing. And I think in the program, it's talking about infill areas. So first recommending that you consider expanding that beyond affordable housing to all housing projects within the screening program. And the other part is that we're talking about infill projects that were identified by the state in urban clusters. And I think it's complicated to change the policy as it is written right now to consider, but just in my mind, I'm thinking that this rolls up to the Climate Action Plan, to the general plan, to the housing element, and that at some point allowing simple screening within community plan areas where there's already some density out there. So as you get the opportunity to see all these policies come together and ultimately cost an applicant who wants to do a project much more when there isn't room to screen out. And so I, I just, again, I think it's a good program. I think that there's a lot of latitude as it's written. But I emphasize that we should really look at all housing projects and consider in the long term how this rolls up to all community plan areas. That's my comments this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room that wanted to speak? I don't see any hands raised online. Is that, confirm that, Director Ford?
We have nobody online other than the people who are here tonight.
Okay. All right, I'll bring it back to commissioners for discussion and any other questions of staff, and the staff, I don't know if you want to respond to any of the comments that were made at this time.
Sure. I would like to appreciate the comments, appreciate the concern with the countywide average versus the incorporated area and then looking at trying to do localized baselines. One of the concerns that I would have with a localized baseline, and I played with this a little bit today relative to McKinleyville, is that if you looked around McKinleyville, the average miles per travel traveled in the different groups is 18.2, 18.72, 19.2, 20.26. They're all right in that range. So if you took an average of those, the average would be right around 19, rough math. And then if you took 85% of that, it would be 16. So McKinleyville would not screen out at that point. And, and so, and McKinleyville, I think, is an area, because it is a development area, that there are areas of lower VMT in that area that currently screens out. So basically, you'd be taking a lot of areas and causing them to not screen out that currently screen out. Because by concentrating the calculation, you're putting them all together. There's no really high and no really low. And, and so the average is so similar, and then if you take 85% of that, there's, there's no way for it to screen out. I'm getting funny looks, so I'm going to ask you to ask me a question about what I just said.
I just have a real.
What, if, there's no, do you have a question on that? If not.
Sort of.
Okay.
Just the pros and cons of either one, like, is it just not so significant that that's why you're just saying just do countywide? Because it would make it more complicated, and there's not much of an advantage?
The advantage between the countywide with the cities in it and just the unincorporated area, it's not huge in terms of what falls out. The difference, there is a difference, but it's not huge. But I think in either case, what we're trying to do, and, and I thought Ms. Acevedo did a good job of explaining this, is we're trying to screen out areas where development, new development is, is appropriate. development, is, is appropriate to be at a larger scale. And, and so in, in those areas, if you don't have some incentive for it to be able to go there and screen out, there is no incentive, there is no locational incentive in terms of doing the sequel analysis. You're making, you're, you're making them all the same at that point. If they're always going to have to do VMT analysis, if they're always going to have to do mitigation, there, there's no incentive to go to a, a more densely developed area. It's at that point, if you're going to have to do the VMT analysis, go do it in an area where the property is cheaper.
Right, and I did write, I, I wrote that down when, when you said in your, in your presentation, the goal is to encourage development in appropriate areas. And I think that is what we're striving to do here, as well as define a process which is fair to the applicant so they understand the criteria. It's fair to the county so they, we understand how we're reviewing these different projects, and we're not negotiating on each one individually, I think is apparently what we must be doing now, since we don't, right now, we, we don't have a policy, so I don't know how, we've been managing over the last four years without one. I assume it's on a case-by-case basis, and, and either the applicant or the county proposes the methodology for determined VMT, and then also proposes and negotiates the, the credits towards VMT. I guess that's done on a case-by-case basis now?
That would be done on a case-by-case basis. And, you know, with, the, the good thing about this is that you can argue about whether or not streetlight data, and if you want to get into that, we can, or the TDM, the transportation demand model, should be used. We were presented with the streetlight data, it's more recent information. It probably can be updated more frequently because it's based upon tracking cell phones and GPSs and cars.
I am curious about to comment about the 2019 data versus the 2022 data-
Correct.
And that the 2019 data may be readily available, or, I didn't quite understand the comment, so.
Twenty nineteen data is available on their website.
Okay.
Twenty-two data is, is what was used and is available currently on RGIS.
Have we compared them side by side to see what differences there are?
There are some areas where we had some real weaknesses in the twenty-two data, so we compared it to the nineteen data. Those were, those seem to be similar. We've not done a complete analysis between the nineteen and twenty-two data.
One thing that strikes me is the nineteen data is pre-COVID data, and the twenty-two data is, still had some COVID impact. And I was, that's why I was curious if there was, if we could see much of a difference there. We were still in a work-from-home environment. People were probably trying to avoid going out as much publicly, so the twenty-two data could actually be lower than the 2019 data, I just don't know. I haven't seen that comparison.
If, if I could, through the chair, I have looked at the two data sets, and 2019 data is slightly higher than 2022 data, slightly.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Levy had a question.
Okay, I, I will have other questions, but I really just wanted to comment on what you just said, because I honestly had not thought of it in those terms. Normally, you think later data better captures current development patterns and, but we had a weird period there, you know, for several years, starting in 2020. So it could be that, in this case, the 2019 data set is actually more representative of what 2025 travel patterns may be. Given that I have seen somewhere else in the staff report that makes the case that, you know, population change has been minimal over this period of time, so that that wouldn't have, you know, so that we wouldn't have seen a big change due to general population growth. So, just putting that out there.
Yes, Commissioner Mulder.
So, I heard staff say 2019 numbers are a little higher. So maybe our VMT threshold, actually, this twenty-two point one is actually a little low and a disservice to the county. That's just the possibility. So, I would hear that as evidence that we should lean towards the higher number, is what I feel, we should lean towards the higher, the unincorporated number, to have a more fair representation of what our real VMTs were and what the fifteen percent we're trying to bring down. And then the other thing I want to remind is, last I checked, we're still a county. So I feel if we're trying to make a policy countywide, and we start doing all these subsets and incorporated, unincorporated, rural, more developed, I, I feel we should lean towards splitting the county in half, maybe, if, if that's the route we're going. Just throwing that out there.
Yes, for your curiosity.
Thanks. Kind of, I wanted to address one comment, both, well, Director Ford, as well as your follow-up comment, around one of the goals here is to try to incentivize infill and encourage development in locations where we're wanting to, we expect to see that VMT reduction. And I guess I, I wanted to bring back a little bit, to, to a little bit, a bigger picture, really, the goal here is to reduce VMT, right? This is greenhouse gas emissions reduction, this is improvement in public health. So, so I recognize your, your reaction there, Commissioner Mulder, and I, I want to point back to the motivation of SB seven forty-three really is the, the carb scoping plan. And the basis for the carb scoping plan and the EIR that was associated with it is greenhouse gas reductions. And the Air Resources Board recognition that we can't achieve those reductions in greenhouse gases without having some VMT reduction. So the, the, the core reason why we're here discussing this, because of SB seven forty-three, is, is because of public health and safety related to climate change impacts from greenhouse gas emissions. And so I think, I just, I don't want us to lose that perspective. We need to make sure that we're not stifling development, and we need to make sure we're protecting our ability to generate housing and employment. But our goal here is not to streamline projects to develop, our goal is to reduce VMT. So I just wanted to bring that context.
And I appreciate that, that clarification, and I, I agree with you on that. And I think the, the challenge for me is how much of that, how much are we going to put on future development in achieving that goal versus how much the whole community is going to engage in achieving that goal, right? So, and I, and I do believe that we can do a better job with, with future development, maybe than we've done in the past. So I think some reduction there, right, in VMTs is, is appropriate. I think the debate is going to be, well, how much, and how much do we put on who? Commissioner Mulder?
So I'm, just want to respond to that, I'm a little confused, because in reading the public comment, there was a part where they brought up greenhouse gas, and that was kicked out because it was specifically said that this is just to deal with VMTs and not greenhouse gas. Those are, that's another container that we have to deal with, that the VMT is this container and the greenhouse gas is other containers. So I'm just a little uncomfortable, because if you bring up the greenhouse gas, then you would bring up the comment of, there was public comment that we're actually carbon negative, so, as a county. So is it our county's job to take on the impacts of the state as a whole, where we could be possibly restricting development and making it, I'm going to bite my tongue on that one. It's, it's a joke I was told about development in Humboldt County, and it's, it's unfortunately, I don't want to say it, because it's not friendly towards Humboldt County.
If I could, maybe add a little perspective to this, you know, the genesis, the carb scoping plan absolutely addresses reducing vehicle miles traveled in a different way, though. It's much more in a macro approach. Seven forty-three came about because it got to a point in urbanized areas where all the intersections had failed. And so putting one more car through an intersection was just an EIR. So why are we just doing EIRs, saying that it's a significant adverse impact and, and doing overriding considerations and not addressing the problem? The real problem is to reduce people driving their cars. And so that's where seven forty-three changed the dynamic of what we're doing with the analysis of traffic impacts to look at vehicle miles traveled. One of the ironies here is vehicle miles traveled does not look at the condition of intersections, does not look at the condition of road segments, it only looks at reducing vehicle miles traveled. And that becomes difficult in a rural community, because many times, as we add traffic, we need to improve the intersections. But that's no longer a sequoia impact. So it's, it's been, in rural communities, it's been complained about, that it's really not applicable. But it is to evaluate sequel impacts from a transportation standpoint. If we start to add in GHG reduction into that, it starts to confuse the issue. And I, I don't want to be argumentative about that, but I think that it's important to keep the focus on what the, originally, state was trying to do. This goes way back to 2018. I mean, I, I remember this coming up as a planner in a, a different place, and we were thinking, oh my God, what is this going to mean? And, and so it's, it's been planned for a while, I'll, I'll stop there, I'm, I'm kind of rambling.
Well, for this evening, we need to decide, you know, how to best get through this discussion, and I don't know if we want to just continue as we're doing, I call it popcorn, we'll just pop up and ask questions and get answers and, and work towards this, or if we want to put the policy up and kind of go through the policy line by line. So I'll ask Commissioner, if you have any more questions?
I, I just would be, it would be helpful for me if I had like a real example of, here's a, here's a potential project in this area, and this using, you know, the, the recommendation of the countywide baseline would cause this project to have to do XYZ versus if we use the other one. And I know, you can't just pull that out of your head, but that would have helped me, because I'm still having difficulties figuring out what the burden is on-
So, I, I, the Fair and Poor Study actually tried to help us with that, is they used two kind of ad hoc examples that we've reviewed. One was the Nordic Project, the other was the North McKay Tract. In, in the Nordic case, we used the, both of them, we used the TDM, which is 2012 data. And the average trip length for industrial, for that area, for that zone, that traffic zone, was, as I recall, fourteen point two. So we found that the average trip length, employee trip lengths to get to work was less than that. So the impact to, to transportation was less than significant. With North McKay, we followed a similar approach, that was now residential, and so the, the number of miles that could be used were a little higher. And, but we'd also, because there's a policy in the general plan, this could, I'll, I'll stay away from that, we, we also screened that one out and identified that it was less than significant impact, so that it didn't have to, to provide any mitigation. So now, let's think about what something else could happen. If the big Forest Service building up in Oric weren't a federal government building, it was something else that we had discretion over, and it was a discretionary permit, we would look at that, and it was like, oh, it's outside the area that has low VMT, and it has more than a hundred and ten employees, and so that would not screen out. So they would have to do a VMT analysis. And that VMT analysis would probably show that there is a potentially significant impact there because of the length of the trips needed to get to the location. So then they would need to start, they would have to identify where they're at. Are they at ninety-five percent of baseline, a hundred and ten percent of baseline? The VMT analysis would give us a number of, to identify what the impact is. Then they would start looking at that list of mitigation measures that Ms. Esposito put up on the screen, and start seeing what they could apply to see if they could bring that impact down. Perhaps what they would do is, is fund a bus route from Oric into Eureka, and maybe that would be, as I recall, the, the reduction number there is about thirty-one percent. And, and that may take it down to a less than significant impact. And so with that, it would be less than significant with mitigation. If, however, they couldn't put in something significant like that, or do something to significantly reduce the impact, and we found it to be a significant impact, and there was nothing that could be done to reduce it down below the eighty-five percent threshold, then in the EIR, it would be determined to be significant and unavoidable. And then the Planning Commission would be presented with findings of overriding consideration to determine whether or not you wanted to approve it in spite of the fact that it had that significant impact. It may be that you found it that, no, we don't want to, and we don't want to make those findings, and so you wouldn't approve the project.
I don't like, in that example, because it discriminates on rural development, and in, you know, in the past, Oric was a community in and itself that pretty much had what it needed, Hoopa was the same way. They didn't need to leave the valley that much, or leave Oric, because everything was there that they needed. So I think that encouraging development in rural areas-
This, could, could I respond to that real quick? Sorry. But smaller development in rural areas does screen out. I used an illogical example of a, a very large development in a very rural place. It could be that in, up in Oric, that they were, somebody was coming in to put in a new grocery store, new retail store, that was less than fifty thousand square feet, that was to serve the immediate area. That would screen out and be exempt, determine less than significant. If, however, this is a gross example, again, if Costco wanted to go into Oric and it had more than a hundred and ten employees, it would not screen out.
What about the example that was given about low-income housing? We should include all housing, not just low-income housing.
So I'm sensitive to housing, for sure. We're trying to encourage housing in all cases. The criteria there is affordable housing, and typically, people in more affordable housing drive less. And, and so not all infill, not all urban areas in the county are actually within areas that screen out for low VMT. So there's a little bit of attention there. I mean, if we want to encourage housing, we can, but to a certain extent, we could be encouraging housing to be developed at a scale that we didn't intend. And, and that's what- And that's what Mr. White, you know, made a very good point. It's like the 110 trips, 25 units, whatever that is. That is kind of a threshold marker there for what would screen out. In rural areas, that's a pretty large development. But in an area closer to Cutton, closer to McKinleyville, closer to those areas, that wouldn't necessarily be a large development.
I think we have a couple more questions here. So Thomas, I think you were next.
So this is through the Chair to Commissioner O'Neill, I guess, because maybe I misheard you. It sounds like you would like to see a higher number of VMTs, not a lower number. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure? Okay.
I'm not sure how to answer that, but I just didn't want to discourage development in rural areas that allow people to not travel as much because their job is across the street or their store is right there. But if you don't allow them to develop, then sure, they have to come out to Eureka to work or they have to, you know, and that's a lot of traveling and cost.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking, you know, because we used to have smaller contained communities. I know my husband grew up in Hoopa and he said, we never went to Eureka. It was like a big deal to go to Eureka. You know, you went there once a month to do your shopping and that was it because they had everything.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
I can give you an example that, this is a real life example. Before I worked here, worked on a shopping center that was on Highway 68 in Monterey County. 110,000 square feet. So it wouldn't have screened out in this particular case. But we argued that because it was right between Salinas and Monterey, that all the people that lived there in San Bonito and in those areas along 68 would now be able to go to the store there rather than having to go out and drive to Salinas or drive to Monterey. So it may not screen out in such a way that there's no additional VMT analysis needed. But it could have VMT analysis and the result of the VMT analysis could be that it actually saves vehicle miles traveled because it provides those services in proximity to where residences live and they don't have other alternatives.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. Just the fact that you have to do a VMT analysis doesn't screen out a project or make a project unfeasible. Commissioner Levy?
Thank you. Okay, so I have sort of a specific comment and a general comment. The general comment I'll make first because it's actually responsive to what Chair Scavdall just asked about how should we approach this? And I'm also struggling with that, but I think if we could perhaps put up, if others agree, we could put up the policy itself and maybe ask to be guided to those parts of it where there's kind of a live issue, you know, based on the questions that have already been asked and there were some pretty knowledgeable comments submitted. I think that would help us hone in on the places where there's something at stake that maybe we want to tweak or, you know, make a recommendation. My specific comment or question, though, is going back to Director Ford and it's actually kinda going back to what you said early on, I think, right after we completed public comment. And I'm, you talked about, I'm not entirely sure if you were saying what I think you were saying, so I'm just gonna ask it again. It has to do with this question of using more granular data for establishing the VMT based on particular local areas. Now, I'm probably gonna summarize this wrong, but in what I gathered of the back and forth between some comments that were submitted earlier and the staff response to those comments, there seemed to be, I thought, a recognition that more granular data would be helpful, but it was prohibited by the fact that we would have to get a license for this system that Caltrans has, but we don't have it and that's $10,000 a year. And, you know, that it was sort of like impractical to get that data, not so much that it wouldn't be worthwhile using it if we had it. But then I see in this letter that just I read with everybody else today about this visualization tool, VMT Plus, that is in fact, as I understand it, produced by the consulting firm that, you know, did our, did our, some of the studies for this. And yes, it's going back to 2019 data, but we could argue about whether that's a big downside or not. What I'm trying to get back to Director Ford is that I think you were responding to that, if I understood you, when you said that when we look at the individualized or localized data for McKinleyville and use an average that is in fact based on their, that localized travel data, then McKinleyville would no longer screen out? I mean, would, I guess I'm not sure that I'm, I'm asking you to sort of return to that point and explain to us, do you not think that using more locally based granular data is helpful if we had access to that data?
We have access to the data.
Okay.
Okay. The tool that's identified there is just the tool. This is the policy.
Yeah.
And so the question that we're confronted with is how granular do you want the data to be? We can get to any degree of granularity. It's not convenient. It may not even be beneficial from a policy standpoint. Because when you root, and I can pull up the GIS and show you exactly what I was talking about. But if all the localized things or areas are within a, because they're similar, they're gonna have similar vehicle miles traveled figures. And so that becomes the average for that area.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
And then you take 85% of that, none of those areas would screen out. Even though they currently screen out because on a countywide or in the unincorporated county average, they're both less than that average. So when you get so granular that you're only, you're calculating an average based upon a very small area, then that area controls. And when you multiply that by 0.85, 15% reduction, is far below any of those. And so then you're discouraging development in those areas.
Okay, but isn't what we say we are doing with this policy trying to reduce VMT, you know, by 15% across the board everywhere? 15% of here, 15% of there?
You can't do that across the board. What we're trying to do is say that if we, number one, if we put development in areas where there's a higher percentage of pedestrian, bicycle, public transportation, we get people out of their cars, that reduces VMT. Those are in areas where people largely are already concentrated and commute less.
Sure.
So those in comparison to the rest of your baseline, whatever you choose your baseline to be, then become priority areas for development. If you say that what we want to do, and I, this is what I just heard you say, is what we want to do is make sure that every single development has a significant impact that has to be mitigated. Then you go very granular. That's the effect of what that would do.
Okay. That may have been what I said and so, but if I can just respond. I mean, I'm not, I guess what I would also say is that it does feel like we're, like we're coming up with a sort of made up number to be the baseline simply so that we can then say, well, these areas are already gonna be 15% under that and these areas aren't. Well, just let me finish the thought because I know I'm not, I'm not very articulate on this subject. It's really one that I have trouble getting my head around and I don't know all the terms. But, I mean, if we were to say, okay, we're gonna look at the individualized, localized, let's just call it, data for VMT and it shows that McKinleyville has this average, then McKinleyville wouldn't screen out automatically, but it also would, it would be easier to make the case, I would think, for development in McKinleyville that in fact, your impact on VMT is minimal. You could even be reducing vehicle miles traveled by some project that puts people living closer to services or services closer to people or whichever way it might be. So, you know, as we've already discussed, whereas you raised for the issue of, you know, you could have something that doesn't get screened out, but that when you do the VMT analysis, you see that its impact is negative on VMT or not positive, it's not growing yet. And I'm just, I'm just, I'm struggling to not know why we wouldn't want to be basing the analysis on more granular data. I mean, I-
It's a policy issue. Whether or not you want to allow areas that have lower VMT than whatever baseline average you choose to be able to screen out. Okay? Or whether you want to establish a baseline in such a way that they can't screen out. That's the difference. And that's what you've got to get your head wrapped around is because you're putting it in such a granular place that it's, there's no comparison to anywhere else. So in all cases, you're requiring development in there to come in and develop mitigation to go 15% below the average for that area.
One more, real quick, I said, I'm sorry, but one more. Could we not accomplish that just as well by saying, these are the areas that we've defined as urban clusters? This is where we want to incentivize infill development? I think we all generally agree on that. Couldn't we just screen those out on the basis of that map rather than on the basis of their comparison to a notional countywide average?
We tried to do that with employee data because that map was all over the place. What we found is that not all urban clusters actually screen out in these numbers. And I want to correct something. These are not made up numbers. These are numbers that were taken from a study that was done. They were synthesized, put into areas. You can, we can argue about whether or not the areas are appropriate, whether or not, you know, we can argue all kinds of things.
Not made up numbers, but there's an argument to be made that they don't tell us much when they're averaged over the whole area. They don't tell us as much as if they were more localized. That's what I was trying to say, you know?
Well, but the localized number becomes the zone, the block group that you're looking at. And if that block group is less than the county average, most in McKinleyville are, some are not, then it would screen out. Okay, so we are looking at very localized numbers.
Okay.
But the question that you've got to ask yourself is what do you want to compare it to? Do you want to compare it to some baseline that's a little bit more reflective of the larger population? Or do you want to compare it to itself?
Sure, okay, well, thank you for indulging my-
No, it's a good dialogue. Yes, Commissioner Mulder.
I'm just gonna ask a question again. Are, through the Chair, to the staff, commission and all, are we not a county trying to set a countywide policy? Or do we need to break the county up into small areas and make multiple counties or split the county up? That's kind of the difference I'm hearing. Like if we're going with this more localized data, let's make a petition, chop the county up? Or let's make a policy that encompasses everyone? I mean, I've heard arguments down in Southern Humboldt that this number is like horrible. It should be 30, 35, maybe even 40. So we're both here, different sides of the spectrum. I think this number is somewhere in the middle. People could easily argue one way or the other. But the thing I really want to get back to, are we a county and making a countywide policy? Or are we putting in a petition to split this county up? That's kind of like the more centralized data. Or I guess maybe is the goal, the policy really to make sure there's an EIR for every single project that comes before this county? Because all the time on my, that I've been on the commission, I know we have, you know, development after development coming forward, you know? So we may want to think about setting policy that encourages that development to come in the door rather than to a different county. Just throwing that out there. If, you know, we want to chop the county up, I mean, I'd be open to that discussion too. So I'm just, I'm trying to think, like circle us back to where we're at because, you know, I've heard lots of comments about, oh, this VMT averages is off. I've heard the same comments. It should be double, is what I hear all the time, so.
Yes, Commissioner Currie.
A question to staff. This really doesn't change the EIR requirements of projects, right? This changes what analysis that EIR might entail.
I think that's, if I understand you correctly, yeah, that's a fair way of putting it.
So I guess to clarify to Commissioner Mulder's statement, I don't think the decision tonight will significantly impact the EIR requirements of projects. I think it impacts what analysis that that EIR will be required to conduct, determining like whether or not they screen out on the VMT analysis portion of the EIR.
I understand that part, but the more, I don't want to use the word term roadblocks, but the more hurdles we put out there, the less likely I'm hearing people want to come jump the hurdles in Humboldt County, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And to that, I think the EIR process originally required an LOS, a level of service analysis. So I don't think the EIR impacts from this really would be significantly different. I'd look to staff to maybe think otherwise.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
That is why we tried to tie and compare the two and talk about what would be less than significant. What's less than significant with mitigation and significant unavoidable. And to a certain extent, you know, the decisions that you make here tonight, what screens out has an impact on what's deemed less than significant. It also will have an impact on when you do a VMT analysis, how well you can identify what the impact is and get it to a less than significant level. So it is an important discussion.
It also potentially reduces the cost of, by having a policy and clear guidelines, can reduce the cost of consulting fees responding, developing an EIR.
So just to that point, I don't think, I just want to make sure, make it clear that I don't think having a lower VMT threshold changes the EIR, the level of work necessarily. I think this voting on a threshold helps streamline and make more clear the VMT portion of the EIR process.
But I think the discussion gets confusing when you jump immediately to EIR. Because the first thing is screening criteria for determination of less than significance. This, I mean, one of the things, the decisions that you're making here tonight, and this is to Chair Scavdall's point, is that if the screening criteria is equitable and it's clear that there are certain areas that screen out, the county then by policy is saying, go here because you don't have to do any additional analysis. That saves a tremendous amount of time and money. And so it's, there, these are huge policy implications.
And just to, I want to go back to Commissioner Levy's discussion about becoming more granular. If I understand this correctly, so I'm kinda testing myself here. But if we do say, decide we- decide we want to go into more granular areas of VMT, and we use McKinleville example, then for me, we'd also have to be looking at individual thresholds by each one of those granular areas. So, for example, in McKinleville, or the area that's already, has a low VMT, I would be saying that projects that don't increase the VMT, or don't have any impacts on VMT in that area, would be the criteria versus the 15% reduction. So, once we go granular like that, I think we're gonna be looking at each specific area and saying, well, how much of a reduction is appropriate, given the current level of VMT in that area? And I think that's gonna just get unwieldy and very complicated, real quickly. That's my opinion.
That's helpful, to respond to my point, so, yeah.
With that, if there're-
Commissioner West seemed to have her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We moved past that part of the discussion, it's okay.
I'm sorry, you gotta hit me on the head. If I have my head turned this way.
I just have one question. If our goal, because that was the question I think you asked originally, is to screen out as many projects as possible, because we don't feel like we're, we're not Los Angeles, you know, we're rural. So we don't want to have people going through all of this expense, when it's really not gonna have that huge of an impact. Or we do, we have looked at large projects, but they never seem to come to fruition, you know, like, they just seem to dissipate. So, we do need employment in our area. I mean, like here, all this, we're gonna have manufacturing in the United States, we don't have anything here. So when all of our government jobs go away, we need something. Is that policy that you're recommending the policy that screens out the most projects? If that was our goal?
If I can refine the statement to what I intended to say.
Thanks, Erin. If I could just refine that to say that screen out projects in appropriate locations? Yes?
The, the policy that you've presented for us to approve would be the policy that would screen out more proj- projects?
It would, it would point projects to locations that screen out.
Okay.
I'm gonna propose that we take a little break right now, and then we pull up the policy, and I liked Commissioner Levy's suggestion, maybe we don't have to go line by line through the policy, but you can tell the sections that we do need to consider. And we work on those. So why don't we come back at 7:20?
Bring the meeting back to order, please. Chip, we going back online? Okay?
Recording in progress.
All right, thank you. So I think we're at the point where we wanted to walk through sections of the policy. Director Ford?
Yes.
So I, I do have it up.
I see it on my screen, but I don't, there we go.
There we go.
Okay.
So I don't think you care about the cover page. And this is a lot of introduction and background, there's no real policy direction here. The first policy direction really gets down to where the, the baseline VMT is. And in this paragraph right here, talks about the baseline for unincorporated Humboldt County was found to be 22.1 miles. And that is for the residential, and then the HBX is residential, HBW is, is work or employees. And, and that would be found to be 14.7. Slightly down below here, talks about what 85% of that would be. So for residential, it'd be 18.79, and then 12.5. So that becomes the first real question, is what does the commission want to do for the baseline? Do you want to use the county average that includes the, the cities? Do you want to use the unincorporated average, which is what has been presented here? Or, or do you want to break the county up into sections? I can show you on a map what the differences are. These are in your, this is attachment 11. So this is what the low, this is what the screening would look like that we're currently recommending. This would be using the county unincorporated area average. So the areas in green would be the areas that screen out.
For residential.
This is for residential, that is correct. So the next one is looking at, was that residential? Yep, that is residential.
And, and to be clear, when you say screen out, that means residential development in those areas would not be subject to VMT analysis.
That is correct.
Okay.
No mitigation.
And no mitigation.
Yep.
This is just a larger view of that. This is a, a blow-up view. So you can see, you know, not all of McKinleville. This is a, a rather interesting figure right here, because that line right there is central. And the way the numbers work is this area kind of down south of Sutter doesn't screen out. You would think that that would screen out first, but evidently not. So then we come down to the employee generation, and this is, as Ms. Asfado put on the screen earlier, what we would recommend. This is really focusing on the area around Humboldt Bay, but it does go down to near Ferndale, and include Fortuna. This is a blow-up of that same area. You can see the area around McKinleville's a little bit larger. Did we include the other options?
I have those available.
You want to pull those up?
So just to be clear, these four that you've just looked at, which were in the packet for this, those are what would be implied by the current staff recommendation?
That is correct.
Okay.
Megan's gonna work through some other maps we generated. One set includes the cities as part of the average, and I believe the other set is just the urban areas. I believe.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If you're in an area that's not screening out right now, and you were proposing to put in a grocery store, or a doctor's office, or something that was essential, can you identify industry or types of business? Because I mean, some of those areas are like food deserts, or they, you know, it, to go to get medical treatment is a long way. So if someone was coming into that area and saying, I want to, you know, put a grocery store in your area, it's, eh, too bad, because it doesn't screen out, and it's gonna cost you way too much money to do it.
Well, I, I want to take the commission back to the fact that there are, are two, actually multiple types of things that screen a project out. One is the location, and that's what we're focusing on now. The other is the size. So a, a doctor's office with 110 would, would be pretty large. And then a, a shopping center of 50,000 square feet or less would screen out. And you could put in a larger store, but you'd have to do a VMT analysis, and it may show in that VMT analysis that it actually reduces miles traveled, because people now don't have to drive to Eureka.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Kierosi.
Quick clarifying question. I've heard, Director Ford, you've said, for employment projects, that you've said 110 employees, but I think it's 110 trips. And so the analysis-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, you have the other maps?
Yeah, so the, the maps shown here, to the left is the recommended map for residential project low VMT screening areas. And to the right, this identifies if we were to use the countywide average, which includes the incorporated cities. And on the next slide here.
Those are hard to see. Can you just describe kind of what the differences are in those?
Here's a zoom in on both of those. You can see that Sunny Bray and Bayside kind of don't screen out, and areas in McKinleville do not screen out. And Fortuna as well does not screen out. I can also move on to the employee data, if you'd like to see those maps. So this shows the employee data. I'll go into the zoomed in maps. I will say, in this map, I don't think this one was updated, so we're recommending to remove this area to the left of Fortuna. So this area would not be included, but the rest of the map is accurate.
So in terms of the, the baseline, there are, there are the two basic alternatives that staff's presenting tonight, or there's a third to look at creating different regions within the county.
Commissioner Mulder.
Through the chair to staff. I know in other things, there's a 10% variation or threshold, being as this isn't, this data is a study, but it also isn't, it does not capture every single household perfectly in this county. Do we have the possibility to, within that 10% threshold, say, you know what, we feel that this number is 10% less than it should be, and we should increase that number of 22.1 by 10%, and 14.7 by 10%, because we feel that it doesn't appropriately, appropriately capture all of the rural traveling?
The 10% that you're referring to normally has to do with how much a project could expand without creating the need for a modification to the permit. In this particular case, I, I would feel really hesitant. In fact, I don't think I would modify the numbers in this analysis. It may be that you're right, that something really doesn't produce that much VMT, but it really needs to be based upon facts. These are the best facts we've got.
Well, that's, I, I understand it has to be based upon facts, and that's why I was asking, in other aspects, there's sometimes a 10% variance allowed, and what I heard you say is, in this case, we don't have that ability to substantiate that for this policy.
Yes.
So I appreciate that, thank you.
So, so to the extent that these maps that we had up, that the unincorporated area, using the unincorporated area data, ends up with a larger screened area, if you will, around Humboldt Bay. To the extent that, that the VMT threshold, being exempt from, from that, or being screened out, would encourage development in those areas versus other areas, I think that would be overall a good thing. Also, if we can get more development in those areas, it would seem that community-wide programs and policies and programmatic things are gonna have more influence around the greater population area also. So, for those reasons, I would be encouraging us to use this unincorporated area data to try to help guide that. Yes, Commissioner Mulder.
I, if we're doing a straw poll type thing, I would agree with that, using that 22.1, because what I heard staff is, that's the highest number we could comfortably use. I've heard a lot of comments, not at the meetings, because lots of people are struggling to get by, that they, they feel this number is very low, and should be much higher. But I heard staff say they couldn't comfortably support a higher number, so, being as this is the highest number staff can support, I would support that as well.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not just suggesting it for that reason, that it's a higher number, but I understand your point. I would also say to the constituents that are concerned about that number, that there are seven or eight other screening criteria that screen projects out, other than simply location. So, at least at this point, there are. We could choose to add or delete some of those, I suppose, but that's my comment on that. Commissioner Kierosi, it looks like you want to make a comment.
Thanks. Yeah, I guess I, I struggle a little bit with this one. I think I'm struggling with the overall stated goal of this, that staff has stated, that the goal of this is to, the goal of this po- policy is to screen out projects located in appropriate areas. And I'm struggling with that, because I keep going back to the, my understanding of SB 743 is to reduce vehicle miles traveled. And while I, I understand the discussion around where development is encouraged and isn't encouraged, I, I think, yeah, I don't, I don't quite know where to go with that, with that being the stated goal of this policy. I think my understanding is, are, the goal here is to reduce vehicle miles traveled, period.
I, I think those are synonymous, in my view, that if you can encourage development in these infill areas, you will reduce vehicle mile traveled. So, isn't it, are we saying the same thing?
Not necessarily. I think there's- I think there's a lot, so I cited one particular research paper that does not, you know, points to, that you can't just assume that's true. We also saw the results from the study, for the initial results, saying that we get these very rural census blocks that drop below VMT. I think basing it off of a gut assumption is, I'm just struggling with that, that, using that as a justification. So I think in general, I think, no surprise, I would lean towards a county-wide average because again, the goal of SB 743 is to reduce VMT. But I guess I don't, this doesn't feel like the, a make or break item for me.
If we're, go ahead.
What were you going to say?
I was going to say if we were going to do a straw poll, I don't know where we are on this, but I will take your comment first, if you have one.
I was going to participate in the straw poll.
Okay.
I lean towards the, using the county-wide VMT over the unincorporated VMT.
We might be, we might be kind of split on this then.
Yeah, I kind of think I lean towards that as well.
Why, I'm trying to understand why that, why that is.
Well, I guess it, speaking for myself, it has something to do with what Commissioner Kurayazi was just saying. I think, I think that this is not the only, or even the main, but it's certainly not the only tool that we have to try to incentivize infill development. And I see that as being a goal that we all agree to. But it feels that in attempting, in making certain policy decisions that do make sure that this document would kind of align as much as possible with where we see infill development being a desirable thing, we may, I mean, I guess, I feel like we may just miss the opportunity to try to set a policy that would do more overall, even in those locations, to bring down vehicle miles traveled. And, you know, whether it's because of the nexus with, you know, greenhouse gases, but there's a lot of other reasons why I think you could say it's desirable. There's places where we, like, we would be, if we set the threshold so that, let's just say McKinleville mostly screens out, you know, do we then lose the opportunity to incentivize doing some of the things that they nevertheless could do on a development in McKinleville that would be mitigations that would further reduce the actual need for driving? I guess is kind of what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. I've, I don't feel like we'll ever get a true reduction in vehicle miles traveled by putting it all on future development or expecting that future developers are going to solve this problem for us. That's not going to happen. And if you want true change in funding for programs county-wide that are going to actually reduce vehicle mile traveled, you're going to need a better economy, more employment, better housing. So you're going to actually need the development to provide the revenue stream to get the environmental benefit that the community needs. So if we keep thinking that we're going to put another straw on the camel's back of the developer every single time in order to improve the environment in some way, we're just, we're just piling more on the camel that's already got a broken back. There is no development in Humboldt County. There, I haven't seen a big subdivision come through here since I've been on the planning commission. So it's not happening. And every time we have a state-mandated policy that comes to us that doesn't quite make sense for Humboldt County, but we have to adopt our part of it, we want to kick the can down the road to the developer and say, "Well, they'll fix it on the next project and that's how we're going to meet our goal." And I don't think that's how we're going to do it. So I'm looking for a policy that's fair to the developers, that shows them the pathway they will have to mitigate if they are impacted, but encourages some development so that we'll get more bus stops and more buses and more bike lanes. Just having a developer put a bike locker in their new subdivision isn't going to do anything. It's not going to solve the problem. So that's my issue and that's why I would prefer to go with the unincorporated, which creates more area for that development without having to do a VMT analysis, which is one more straw. That's my, that's my pitch. Yes.
I don't disagree with a lot of what you said. I think I just am threading the needle slightly differently than you are when thinking about the threshold. As we've talked about already tonight, having to do a VMT analysis is not necessarily prohibitive to doing your development.
It's not.
And it's just a consideration. So I just wanted to, I think, follow up on, on that conversation. I also wanted to add that in the past, when we've been, if we are going to be a 3-3 on a straw, sometimes we've just given both alternatives to the two advisors to consider. So if we can't come to an agreement tonight, that might be a path forward.
Yes. Commissioner Mulder.
So I just want to clarify, it does seem like we're at a 3-3. Is that correct? Commissioner O'Neill, are you at the unincorporated or the county-wide average? Are you at 22.1?
I'm the one that screens out the most projects.
So then that would be the unincorporated, is that correct, staff? Okay. So we're at a 3-3. I'm just, so I just want to clarify, the county-wide, I'm going to ask staff through the Chair to staff, with the county-wide, the maps I saw, all of Fortuna, all of a sudden, there's zero opportunities for screening out in Fortuna. So I just want to ask the commission, saying, "Okay, you know what? Just south of that Eureka, you ain't Humboldt County. That's how I feel about it."
Yes.
I'll just make a quick follow-up to your comments. Commissioner Scavdall, I think, I don't think what you said is exclusive of this policy. I guess what I'm trying to say is, even if we had amazing growth and we had significant amount of development here, happening in Humboldt County, the, this would not solve the VMT production challenge that our community faces.
I agree with that.
And so, and so I guess I don't, that there still has to be a significant amount of work by the community. And to the extent that new development doesn't align with the work that the community, that the existing community needs to do, it just makes it that much, potentially that much more difficult. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with that.
Well, I agree with you, it does. And so if we don't encourage new development to come into the areas where they're going to have the least impact, and we just say, "You have to do a VMT analysis if you're going to do a project in Humboldt County," which is basically what we're almost saying here when we go to the, to the county-wide average, everybody has to do a VMT analysis for every project.
Only, but it's still, as you said, there's lots of other things that screen out projects.
There are.
So that it's actually a minority of projects that would have to do a VMT analysis. It's a small minority.
We're, we're not going to, we're, it's a, it's a, well, first of all, let's face it, it's a minority of projects because there aren't very many, okay? But we're reducing one of the screening criteria significantly by area. So we're going to allow still screening criteria by project type, but we're reducing screening criteria by area. So every project, to Commissioner Mulder's point, that has to do, that's coming in, that's subject to VMT analysis, south of, south of Eureka essentially, would be subject.
Yeah, and I do want to point out to the commission that this is more than screening criteria. This is also significance criteria.
Yeah.
So in terms of applying mitigation, when you lower that number, that's the number that's now the target for level of significance that you have to apply mitigation to.
So you're making it more, you're making it more challenging for developers. No question about that.
I was throwing this out there. I know a handful of people that intentionally live 30 minutes away from where they work. They always, you know, it gives them 30 minutes plus to clear their head, leave the workplace behind, so by the time they get home, they can enjoy their family. That might be against what people think, but also there's something about driving down the highway, seeing it, you know? Am I potentially biased because maybe I drive more than 22.1 miles a day? Yeah, I also walk 10 miles a day. I don't know. I'm very, feel strongly about the 22.1. And then also I feel, you know, I said this earlier about cutting the county in half. You know, it feels really like we're setting up policy of, you know, I don't know the exact miles, but McKinleville and Eureka and Fortuna and Eureka, I think they're close in mileage, but I don't, I've never done the thing. So yes, there's an airport in McKinleville. It's fogged in a lot of times, you can't always land. Some people say it might be better to have an airport developed down towards Fortuna. I have no idea the viability of that. But this policy, I feel, is okay. Eureka North, good. Eureka, South Eureka, not good. So as someone that drives 60-some-odd miles to come to this meeting, will continue driving 60-some-odd miles to come to the meetings, nah, I don't know. I guess if we're 3-3, I'm going to ask Chair if we can move on to the next thing because I got a 60-some-odd mile drive home.
I don't see anybody compelled to move their position on this, so it looks like we're 3-3.
I used to drive 50 miles every day at work.
So.
It's fun.
Yeah. And then, once I got there, then I had to go another 30 miles.
I just, again, I just don't think we're, it's fair to tell those that are developing in the unincorporated part of the county that they have to be 15% less for future development on vehicle miles traveled than a whole county, including those people that are in the incorporated areas. It's just.
Well, we're also in a period where I don't know if anybody's going to develop anywhere, you know?
So get it.
So Chair, for sake of addressing this, what is the commission's preference? You can do a couple of things here, is you can find yourself deadlocked on this and so you'd have no recommendation on this.
Yep.
You could wait till the seventh commissioner returns. Somebody could change their mind, but I don't see that happening.
It's okay, I mean, it's okay. I think if we're deadlocked, it's just the policy's going to go to the Board of Supervisors ultimately anyway, so probably going to come back for debate. Commissioner Mulder.
So the other thing by the lower threshold, it's basically lowering the bar another 10%. So realistically, it's saying we need to lower our VMTs by 25%. I mean, it's not quite 10%, but it's darn close, those number differences. So this, I guess that's really the objective there.
I think I'm personally more in favor of not having a recommendation and sending this to Board of Supervisors, simply because this is our second meeting on this and I'm like, if we have another meeting, potentially a different commissioner would not be there and it, it just feels like it's time to move on, but I'm curious to hear what the other commissioners say.
Yeah, I mean, I think I don't want to keep going around in circles on this. I think there's a real division here. I, I hope both sides can, can recognize the sort of principled intention behind the other side. It's not, if anything, I feel like what this would do is spread the burden more evenly to include the populated centers and not put it all on those areas that are sort of outside the Humboldt Bay area by not automatically screening out those projects. That's, that's at least my way of looking at it, why I'm sort of puzzled by Commissioner Mulder seeming to, you know, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I understand your concerns. You want, you want a higher number in general. But, but what we're sort of talking about specifically, about how that average translates to screening out geographically, it would have the effect of actually equalizing the burden across more of the county rather than placing it solely on those places that are sort of outside the greater Humboldt Bay area, right?
Can I respond to that, Chair?
Yes.
So you are missing, and somewhere I'm missing, communication. I don't agree to that. It's because I'm, my objective is not screening, how many places can we screen out altogether? How fair can we be to everyone? So say a residential development in the southern Humboldt area, you know, there's this zoning change that you can have housing in commercial areas or something like that. So what if this difference from 22.1 to 20.1 that they have to bring down, the 20.1 is almost a 10% reduction already, the threshold? So then maybe, maybe I'm understanding it wrong, but that's kind of where I'm seeing is the threshold, we're already lowering the bar. So if I'm understanding it wrong, I'm going to beg staff to correct me because I would look at this from a different perspective.
If I could, Chair?
Yes.
So there are types of development that are principally permitted. You just mentioned the residential, commercial. So residential now is principally permitted in commercial zones. So since it's a ministerial action, goes straight to building permit, it doesn't require any SEQA, it would not be subject to this.
So, but to piggyback on that, there's also some larger tracts of land in between Redway and Garberville that could potentially be developed at one point in time. It would take a lot of work.
Correct. But I think that one very large track is R3, which principally allows certain things to occur.
I guess where I'm at is I feel that the bar shouldn't be lowered to then lower it again because it, if we're going to do that, we should do 22.1 and say, "Hey, we want to reduce it 25%." Because that's, that's the way I see that decision, if that makes sense. And then as far as, I mean, I think it'd be great to travel another 120 miles of VMT to talk about a VMT policy. So I'd rather kick the can, do another meeting if we can't get consensus, but I don't think that's the smartest choice.
What is the vote right now? Is it every other one of us is?
Yes, it seems like we're split 3-3 on this. I'm going to come back to Director Ford one more time. So staff looked at this, he looked at the two options, you made a recommendation. Why is this, why, can you tell me why staff is recommending one versus the other?
We thought that the one is based upon the area that we have jurisdiction over and the other involves other jurisdictions. You read the comments that there was concern that a comprehensive policy should not exclude areas of the county. And while the averages would not be included within the unincorporated area, the trip lengths are not bifurcated. the trip lengths are not bifurcated, so.
Okay. I would suggest that your report to the supervisors tries to capture the two different sides of this debate. I think it's great, we have a spirited debate, we don't always have to agree on everything. I'm sorry, we're not leaving you with clear direction on this one.
No, you're giving us clear direction.
Okay.
We're gonna write a report to the board that said, here, you've got a choice.
Yes. I think, sounds like that's where we are on this.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I could change because I can see, I, you know, your last question, Chair Scavdall, I do give a lot of deference to the staff's recommendation in general. They've thought about this longer and harder than I have. But I guess I do feel like there's enough of a division in where we're trying to say here, what we're trying to accomplish, that it's not, as Commissioner West said, a terrible thing to just sort of leave it the way we, you know, leave it as a, we were divided, so now we have to pass this to the supervisors rather than almost falsely, you know, portray that we all were on the same page about this, so.
If we're not divided from time to time, we're probably not doing our job, so I'm okay with that, yes.
Just wanna add one more thing. I do wanna state for the record that all of the comments in favor of kind of leaning towards this lower VMT threshold were provided to us written form. The one comment that was, public comment that was provided to us electronically, but not in written form, leaned the other way.
I clarify, by leaning the other way, you mean the submitted, the late submitted comment by Epic leaned towards what you're saying is the higher number?
I feel that there was two types of comments we received, public comments. I just want to acknowledge that we received in written form at the dais three comments that leaned more towards this way, and we did not receive at the dais in written form the other type of comment. We did receive it electronically, I just, when we talk about equality and inclusion and all those kind of things.
What we could do is go with the countywide average, but change the threshold of impact to ninety percent.
That's a great idea.
Well, it's another approach. I don't, I don't think it'll take us off of our three-three spot, but I'll toss it out there.
So, what do you think, John?
It's a different way of articulating it. I mean, there's nothing inherently wrong with that.
What, changing, can you elaborate what your suggestion was one more time?
If you wanna use the countywide average for VMT, then you just would, to address what Commissioner Mulder's concerned about, and what I'm also concerned about, which is to help screen out some projects, would be to change the established thresholds of significant from eighty-five percent to ninety percent.
I guess I would, I'd be very nervous about doing that because the fifteen percent points at the technical analysis from OPR. And I think one of our requirements here, up here, is when we're approving the resolution, we're approving findings, and those findings have to be based on substantial evidence. So, I think I would be very nervous going that route.
In addition to Commissioner Kuriazzi's comments, I also don't love the idea of going with a decision that's fairly different than anything that's been discussed and presented, and had the public has had an opportunity to comment on. So, if we were to want to consider that, I would like to have another meeting for, another opportunity for public input.
And I'm not fixed on that, I just toss out there as an idea. But, and I agree with you, that it appears that the eighty-five percent criteria has some basis that is probably more legally defensible, right? So, okay. What's the next, are we at screening criteria for, is that where we go?
Yes, we can.
Do you have other?
No. So, we've gone through the thresholds of significance now? And then, there's the screening criteria, the first is?
I guess, sorry to interrupt you, I guess I don't feel like we did go through thresholds of significance, and if we went through baseline.
It's the same standard.
I would, I have some comments on the threshold of significance.
Okay.
I think I'm gonna push the earlier comment that I had regarding the 2022 scoping plan. And I think this, so the root of this is we are approving a resolution, and in that resolution, we have findings, as I stated before, that state that we have to, we are proposing something based off of supporting evidence, or substantial evidence. The, the technical report, I keep saying OPR, I can't remember what their new name is.
LCI.
LCI, thank you. They, the way I read it, it's very clear that that technical advisory rests on the 2017 scoping plan. And that, the 2017 scoping plan is where the fifteen percent number comes from. And the rest of that technical advisory is all of the justification needed to provide that sort of legal substantiation, or that justification for substantial evidence. The scoping plan clearly states that results may be superseded by updates to that scoping plan, and we have an update to that scoping plan. The 2017 scoping plan did not provide a percent reduction number, which also necessitated OPR to release, my understanding, to release this technical advisory, to give guidance to local governments. The 2022 scoping plan clearly says a twenty-five percent number because we've done, been unable to achieve, we've been, we've been behind in achieving VMT reductions. And so, I guess from my role as a planning commissioner, approving a resolution that has to be based on substantial evidence, I'm struggling with why we are not looking at the 2022 scoping plan. I agree that twenty-five percent is extremely daunting. I don't, and can that be achieved? That's tough. But going back to rules, and sticking to rules, and sticking to what our role is here, and we have to base our argument on substantial evidence, I would like to hear from staff some more discussion around why we are not using the 2022 scoping plan.
We looked at the 2022 scoping plan, and it's very apparent there that that's an overall reduction in VMT, not just associated with new development. That's why, like, the RTP focuses on the twenty-five percent reduction. That is reducing vehicle miles traveled, not just on new development, but by pulling people out of their cars, putting them in public transit. And the, so, that being understood, that's an ambitious goal. The OPR guidance, LCI guidance has not changed. And as we looked at it, we came to the conclusion that it had not changed because it's recognizing that there's a difference between attempting to pull people out of their cars that are existing trips versus trying to reduce the number of miles traveled for new development. And that's still where the LCI guidance is, that's still where OPR is, and that's the conclusion we came to. I'll just say one more thing, substantial evidence is really important. The substantial evidence in the existing OPR guidelines, we can rest on because it does address fifteen percent for new development. A scoping plan seems to be more ambitious. So, there's a difference between aspiration and substantial evidence.
I would agree, except, I would, I certainly agree. And I certainly agree that it's ambitious. It's ambitious for a reason, because we've not, we have not seen the VMT reductions required in the analyses that the Air Resources Board has done. And that analysis was substantiated by the EIR that accompanied that scoping plan. And it's clear to me that the OPR guidance rests on that. The fifteen percent does not come from anywhere else. And then, I agree, there's a difference between other methods for encouraging people to get out of, or to take other modes of, to travel in different ways. However, they are directly linked. And one way that they're directly linked is what we require new development to do. So, for example, when we had a project here that we had to consider whether or not to waive the requirement for a sidewalk, the more we do that, the more difficult it is for the rest of that effort to create an infrastructure where people feel like they actually do have a choice. And I think, I feel like I wanted to air that. I, you know, I hear the public comment around, there's multiple public comments around supporting fifteen percent. And then, also recognizing just fifteen percent is significantly challenging in and of itself. I don't want this to be an issue that holds me back on voting on this, or approving this in concept, but as, again, I am required to, I have to look at the resolution, and the resolution is what's important here, and it has findings that have to be based on substantive evidence. And while I agree, the OPR analysis at its time, at the time that it was developed, provides that, I feel like the 2022 scoping plan is that additional, those additional results that supersedes the results that they had at that time. I don't know what to do with it, but I felt like it was important to put that out there on the dais as part of the decision process that I'm going through.
Commissioner Mulder?
So, just wanna clarify, you would like a thirty-five percent reduction? Because supporting the lower number and then wanting twenty-five percent on top of it is technically a thirty-five percent reduction, is the way I understand it.
The, I think this goes back to, I'm sorry to bring this up, but making up numbers. So, we're not making up numbers, but it really highlights that you can make an analysis, you can often make an analysis go the way you want it to. And so, from that perspective, we have a lot of discretion to define what that baseline is because it changes significantly depending on how you look at the, how you cut the data. I have, I have a lot of experience in data analysis and data modeling, and all of these assumptions can change wildly what type of number you're looking at. And so, I think your question really highlights that, and why Commissioner Scavdall brought out, well, we just stated it a different way, and we say ninety percent. I think you're right, and I also think you're right because of this challenge of, we can, we can choose a model however we want to kind of go the direction that we want to go. The, and I think the legal basis around the fifteen percent, I think we have to stay with that because of the substantial evidence thing, but we have the discretion to change what the effective result is by choosing that baseline. So, to answer your question, I'm coming more at it from a, I'm struggling agreeing with the finding on substantial evidence based off of the OPR guidelines using 2017 and less, and not really, and not coming from a place of, I wanna reduce VMT by thirty-five percent, if that makes sense.
Got it.
I don't know necessarily how to help you with that. But, I mean, other than, I'm, you know, and you have a depth of knowledge that's probably beyond some of the rest of us here on the commission on this topic, but, and I read your comment, and I appreciate that you sent it in early enough so that we could actually review and help analyze it and try to look into it ourselves, which I did. And so, I took some comfort from, again, you know, the analysis that was done in the Fair and Peers report, and, again, acknowledging that the vehicle miles traveled in Humboldt County related to future development as a percentage of the total vehicle miles and traveled in the county is relatively small. And for us to achieve any goal, it's gonna come from greater countywide programs, and I recognize that twenty-five percent, yeah, that's, that's gonna be an ambitious goal for us, but it has to come from these other greater countywide programs in addition to better future development that's incrementally better than we've done in the past. And I get your point about, you know, the sidewalk on Humboldt Hill, and I was, you know, and when we talked about that, we talked about, well, again, the greater need was an overall plan for pedestrian access around that area so that then, as projects come along, we could fit it all together, right? So, so that's, that's kind of my take on where I'm going with this and how I can get comfortable with it, where we are. So, appreciate the comment, and understand your dilemma.
I agree, and, you know, there are, at least in the past, there has been ways to fund some community-wide priorities like bike paths and sidewalks, but to put all that burden on a developer who is trying to provide housing or, you know, employment is somewhat unfair. If the community wants it, then the community should be willing to fund it or to look for resources on a community-wide basis, like I did when I worked for the tribe. You know, you're looking to solve these problems, you're not saying, okay, if you wanna do a project, it's gonna cost you twenty-five million dollars, and you're like, I can't do it. You know, it's too much. So, it has to be based on a plan, and once you have that idea, I think you can secure the funding for it. It doesn't have to, you know, be in your existing budget, there might be a place to find the funding for it. At least, there has been, in, you know, my experience in the past. But I don't think it's fair to just say, okay, you wanna do a project, and we're gonna add on a couple million dollars worth of add-ons, and then they walk away from it. And there's already, it's already impossible to build anything right now, the cost is so high. And it's even, it's, this week, it's probably gone up even more, you know, so, to the point where who's building anything?
Okay.
So, back to the screen?
Yeah.
So, this then gets into just a reference to the high-quality transit stops. And we talk a little bit about the map-based screening, and we've talked about that quite a bit. And we start to define what are small projects, like a hundred and ten vehicle trips per day or less. And those then are defined here. And then, we get to the one that's titled Affordable Housing. The request was made to change that to any housing.
When you said the 110, does that include like your vendors, deliveries?
No, that's employee trips. Commissioner Mulder.
So I just want to clarify, was staff...did I hear staff like ask for guidance if we would like to open that housing to percentage of affordable housing or did...I just am trying to clarify where to go with that.
Well, we feel that since this is the guidance, I believe, that comes out of LCI, that this is probably the safest place to be.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Yeah, thanks. So just the specific definitions of each of these land use projects by type that you have in this Table 1 are the same as the...what, LCI, OPR?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me. Sorry. Just trying to study and run the meeting at the same time, sorry.
Commissioner Mulder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask one follow-up? Is there...if this came right out of guidance, is there any...anything less than 100% affordable housing that could be supported under that or was it only 100% affordable housing?
That's verbatim.
Okay.
So the maps, obviously, we believe should be changed, and what they will be changed to will be determined by the Board of Supervisors when they choose whether it's the unincorporated area or the countywide average. I think at this point, it may be beneficial for Ms. Asfedo to share her screen and go through the other changes that are proposed and just present those. That may be a little bit more convenient.
Yeah, so I just...I want to be...I want to come back to the maps one more time. So the screening criteria for residential and office projects and for mixed-use projects are also screened in accordance to those maps, right?
So they could screen out in two ways.
Yeah.
One is that there is screening criteria for the mixed-use projects, and if they screen out in one of those areas, depending on whether or not...depending on what the map ends up being.
Right.
And...yeah. Then if not, they would be evaluated with a VMT analysis.
But, okay, let me see if I'm... I thought that...this is confusing me again, sorry. We were talking about thresholds of significance. I thought that's when we were talking about countywide average versus...
Right, but that affects the maps.
Doesn't necessarily have to. I mean, these are still low VMT areas.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding you. Can you repeat that?
We have low VMT areas per residence, you know, Bridgeville, for example, is shown on the map.
We're recommending that that not be on there.
Okay.
We're recommending that...part of the struggle, and Ms. Asfedo said this, that it probably is one of those things where you don't lock into it. The map intuitively doesn't make sense because it shows these low VMT areas in very, very rural places.
Yeah, because there's a lot of growers out there, and there's a lot of people that live out there, and they don't have to drive very far to work.
Correct.
That's why they're low VMT areas.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so we're recommending...there's two safeguards there.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to allow a low VMT area to be in a place where somebody could come in and then it would screen out for a different kind of use. So the...one of the things that was there is that you can't change the general plan. If it's not consistent with the general plan and zoning, you can't do it. And so in the areas where things are zoned AE and TPZ and things like that, you're not going to put a big development there. So...but just to be clear so that nobody's confused, we think that it's worthwhile just taking that out because the types of developments that are allowed out there are small, would screen out due to size. And so we believe that that's an appropriate change.
Okay. All right. I'm good. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Curiezi, I think, had his hand...had her hand up first, so...
Just a quick comment because it sounds like I had some questions around the use of the word office projects and retail projects, and I think it's clarified that it applies to employment. Can we change that wording in the table to say employment projects? Okay.
Yes, we're recommending to change the language to say employment projects and to include industrial and commercial.
Awesome. Thank you for repeating that. Thanks.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, my...I just wanted to highlight a question that was raised by Ms. Dodd's and Mr. White's comments and then was responded to in one of the attachments here. This was the point about...the question about visitor-serving projects, hotels, things of a touristic nature. And I'm reading the response, and I'm just not in this document, Attachment 10. But maybe I should just ask more broadly. How does this...how does this as written apply to those projects? And are there any...is there an argument to be made for tweaking it so that those categories would be explicitly addressed, that type of project?
I think those are really hard. We talked about treating those as perhaps just employment, but they're really not that. The predominant types of trips there are the people going to visit. And so I think I would hearken back to the project that the commission approved at the last meeting, which is the Take 3.
Right, right.
And so that was really a visitor-serving special event kind of thing. And so a VMT analysis was done there, so it would require a VMT analysis, but it would identify ways to reduce how people get their...the overall vehicle miles traveled. So it really wouldn't screen out. It would still require an analysis.
Sure. Okay. I think that that's actually a helpful reminder because it's not that we don't want those projects. We want them. We want to bring visitors to the area, but my concern is that when we do...when there are development projects that will bring large numbers of people or above some increments, you know, that I guess that we should be factoring a VMT analysis into that, and I guess that's the way things are now. That's the way things would be.
Yeah. And if I could, Chair, one of the things we talked about is, you know, as we get more experience with those, maybe get more empirical data, perhaps see what other jurisdictions are starting to do with that. That's really not addressed in any kind of document that has the substantial evidence. Then we would have the substantial evidence to start to form a policy on it. But to come up with a haphazard guidance right now, we just didn't feel comfortable doing that. Yes. Commissioner Curiezi?
To build on that, to clarify so that it would not be staff's...staff would not include the Take 3 project as an employment project?
Correct.
Okay. So it just simply would not be addressed? That particular project type is not addressed here?
Correct.
And projects that are not addressed are essentially not screened?
They're not screened.
Okay. Just to be clear. Thank you.
I think I'm going to stop sharing, and then Megan, can you put up the list of other changes?
I think the other changes that we're recommending is to update language for using the CAPCOA Handbook calculations to add or as amended because those recommendations could change. And removing the use cleaner fuel vehicles from the mitigation strategies. And also to add language to include utilizing the Trip Generation Guide from the Institute of Traffic Engineers for projects detailed VMT analysis to determine their project-specific VMT.
Commissioner Curiezi?
Regarding the...I had some comments around the CAPCOA Handbook and the approach for including language that was pulled from the Fair and Peers study, which was either a summary or directly copies out of the handbook. And I want to reiterate, and then also at the...so let me actually...let me start with a question. The...in the presentation earlier today, the table is shown of the potential reduction associated with different mitigation strategies that are listed in the policy. Is that...are those numbers in that table what staff intends to apply?
Yes.
Okay. The...so I have a lot of experience working with the CAPCOA Handbook. I've used it quite a bit and quite extensively. I'm going to use a really strong term here, not to be offensive or to be rude or to be mean, but it...in my experience, it would be negligent to use those numbers. It is really important to use the handbook as it's written and follow its direction very closely. The 31%, for example, for transit-oriented development cannot defensively be applied anywhere in Humboldt County. It...there...the handbook has very specific guidance on how you determine the percent reduction associated with a different project. And quite a number of those measures in that handbook clearly identify whether they're applicable in rural, in suburban, or in urban areas. And they also list the sources of their assumptions. In addition, the comment was made by staff that if a project does multiple mitigation measures, that you can add up the percentage reduction. And again, you can't do that. The handbook has very specific guidance on how percentage reductions can be added up within a given reduction area. And so again, I really want to stress that I would...if the mitigation measures you're including in the policy use the actual name of those mitigation measures and their associated numbers, such as like mitigation T-1, and refer to the handbook and require the use of the handbook when implementing those measures.
I have a question. Can you tell me what removing rural block groups from low VMT screening maps means?
Those...oh, sorry, if I could through the chair. Those are the maps that we showed where the outlying block groups were removed from the screening criteria maps. Those are the attachment 11 in the staff report.
I want to come back to Commissioner Curiezi's comment statement. So I just want to make sure I'm capturing this properly. I think you're suggesting or recommending that we refer...that the policy refers and adopts the handbook or the guide...whatever guideline. The CAPCOA Handbook as the basis for determining the mitigation credits. Is staff okay with that recommendation?
Yes, we will do that to the...one of the things I hate, and I tried to do, is get away from having people, either the public consultants or staff, go to multiple different sources, try to figure out what they're doing because it just gets to a place where it's extremely confusing. I do get to a point where there is...is thing...or kind of editorial notes in the text of the guidance that says, don't do this if it's this, do this if it's this. That can't be captured in the table. That does need to be either referred to or imported in whole.
Yeah, I think there's a risk in just extracting part of a document into our policy, and I think that's what Commissioner Curiezi is pointing at. And so I think we want to be careful about that.
Yeah, I agree. I also...I see where Director Ford is coming from, but I...it's also nice that as like the CAPCOA Handbook is updated, if you're just referring to that resource, then staff doesn't have to balance some policy that was sourced from a previous version.
Guess I would recommend that if I were to copy rather than reference, I think the policy...the length of the policy document would be very long.
Agree. I was just sitting here thinking probably what we'll do is we'll just put a...embed a link to it.
Yeah, I don't...to me, that's no different than referring to the Uniform Building Code, right, for certain building policy or this or that. So I think it's...as long as that document, and I don't...this is where I don't know, as long as that document is recognized by the industry as the document that you would go to for designing these strategies and these...calculating these credits.
So Director Ford, then, do you feel that if embedding a link to the relevant provision of the handbook can be done, does that...does that essentially, you know, fix the problem that Commissioner Curiezi has raised without making it overly complicated or difficult for either staff or applicants to use?
That would be fine. I completely get it. There's no...there is no perfect way to do this because I did look through the guidelines, and they are huge.
Okay.
And as those guidelines are updated from time to time, and I think we should adopt the latest edition of whatever that guideline is, as they're adopted...as they're updated from time to time, other mitigation strategies may develop, right, in the future that we would just be able to incorporate by reference to those documents. One that I was looking for, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier, because it developed through COVID, is the whole work-from-home strategy. And I don't see that as a mitigation strategy for employer-based VMTs. So is...and I know it certainly works for...might work for government agencies if they allow. It certainly works for service companies, but all... certainly works for service companies, but also even other retail businesses or others that have back-office support staff. A lot of that can be now work-from-home and is done work-from-home. So if companies adopt policies that allow work-from-home, that could reduce VMTs. I didn't see that as a mitigation in here, maybe it's just not in the handbook yet, or not?
Yeah, I don't think we came across that.
Yeah. So that's why I say if we adopt a handbook and we say, and we include the future additions of that handbook, because that would be a policy that I suspect might appear at some point.
There, I, I think it does show up, but it's not quantified. So there's kind of a list of supporting, it does, I don't know if it necessarily helps, helps a developer because at the end of the day, I think the county has to have a quantified. But I think it does show up in there, but it's like a.
But if, if the cutoff's 110, and you say, "But I can have 20 people work at home," that puts you down, or let's say it was 115 you were going to have, but you allowed them so that you wouldn't have to do the additional mitigation because you mitigated it by saying stay at home, which would be cheaper than, you know, some of the other alternatives.
Does that give you some guidance there? And also cap, you have to capture the combining VMT mitigation strategies. There were some comments there also that I think are.
Yeah, I, I, I think we will address that, capture that.
Okay.
Because that's actually captured just by getting back into the CAPCOA.
Yes, yes. Okay.
The other could be employees that commute, because that's what we did with the tribe. We, they provided commute bands, and we all piled in there instead of all taking our own cars.
Yeah, that's, that's clearly a, a preferred method, frankly.
Yeah. Okay, do we need to?
I would appreciate a motion and a vote, and I think the motion would be that you would adopt the VMT policy guidelines as presented with the changes that have been presented with the under, with the caveat that the Commission was deadlocked on what the baseline of VMT should be.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner West.
I'll second that.
A second from Commissioner O'Neill. Any comments, discussion on the motion? Being none, I think we can just take a voice vote on this. All those in favor, sing bye-bye, sing aye.
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 Any opposed?
I oppose.
I have one opposed. Okay.
I would like to just say again, I definitely struggle with the substantial evidence portion. But I think it's important to pass this policy as well.
I appreciate it. I also appreciate that. The second was, the motion was by Commissioner West, and the second was by Commissioner O'Neill. Yes. I think it was a good discussion, I hope everybody got to say their part. As I said earlier, we don't always have to agree. In fact, I don't think we should from time to time, so.
Definitely.
Appreciate that. And I know all the Commissioners put a lot of time into this policy, as did the staff. So hopefully it makes your job easier when you get through all of this, we'll see. Okay? Yes, Mr. West?
I didn't mention it earlier, but I just wanted to appreciate staff and all the work that they did for this one. I really loved the response to comment table, it was easy to digest everything, the presentation was great. So thank you for putting so much time into it.
Here, here, thank you.
Likewise.
We have no items pulled from consent. Director Ford, anything else to report out?
The only thing I wanted to report on is that, as I mentioned, I think earlier, there are two large projects coming the Commission's way. One is the Regional Climate Action Plan that we have been targeting, getting before you on June 5th. And the second is the We Are Up project. It's an interesting project that mixes senior, senior citizens with people with special needs, living together in community. And then in order to make it more affordable, there are special events. The Commission actually did approve a previous iteration of this, but when it was appealed to the Board, they decided to go back and do a redesign. They've done a substantial redesign that's made substantial improvement, frankly. And I, I think that, and part of the thing that's pushing this is that there is a grant deadline that they're facing. So we would like to see if we can get them to the, in front of the Planning Commission in June. But there is not a second meeting in June. I don't think, I think the, our, the RCAP, the Regional Climate Action Plan is, is a meeting by itself. And I, I think that We Are Up project probably is going to be a meeting just about by itself as well. So I wanted to ask if you'd be willing to have a second meeting either on the 12th or the 26th. I have come to understand that several Commissioners are not available on the 12th. So it may be that the 26th is a date that is most appropriate.
Yeah, I, I will not be here on the 12th.
I, I'm available on either date. And I remember the We Are Up meeting that we did have was probably the most well-attended meeting I've seen before the Commission. So it certainly makes sense to me that we would make time for a town meeting.
Well, I appreciated the heads up about those, and I am fine with, I could do either June 12th or June 26th, but if June 26th works for more people, I'm happy to set a meeting on that date.
If, and I'm, I don't need to be here, so I can't be here on the 12th. I'm going to be back east coast for my niece's wedding. But Commissioner West will be here, so.
One of the things about the 26th that makes sense to me is that the 12th would be the Regional Climate Action Plan, and then the We Are Up in back-to-back weeks. Whereas the 26th, there's no meeting on the 19th. And then unless you want to meet on July 3rd, which I didn't think you would, it kind of puts you in a northern, normal rhythm without having back-to-back meetings.
Definitely.
And I'm unavailable the 12th and the 5th. I might actually be out of town, so I might miss that meeting unless I can figure out a way to be able to zoom in. Kids are only kids once.
Yeah, they are.
Sure. Okay, but with that, are we, are we decided that it's going to be scheduled? I mean, we have another meeting next, it's not the next meeting, but.
Right, yeah, we have the meeting the 15th, and then the 5th.
5th, and then the 26th, yeah, sure.
Okay?
Okay.
Sounds like we have a decision on that.
26?
Can I, can I ask, is there a plan for a meeting on July 10th? Are you skipping 3rd and pushing it to the 10th?
No, we probably roll to the 17th, which is the second, normal second meeting day.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else this evening? Meeting adjourned.
Okay.